Thank you. I'd like to call the public hearing portion of the Warren County Board of Alderman Meeting for September 15, 2015 to order. The first item on the agenda would be the Section 405.050, Definitions and Interpretations of ADM-78. Jack?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This is a proposed text amendment to Section 405.050, Definitions and Interpretation, ADM-78. I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, the public hearing notice, and my planning and zoning report. Motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one vacancy at the September 3, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with the condition that the existing definition for trailer, utility, and vacation are recreation vehicle are not revised and remain the same.
At this time, it's open to the public. We ask you to keep your comments to a minimum of five minutes. Anyone? Not seeing anyone. We'll move on to the next portion of the public hearing, which would be Chapter 420, Defense Regulations of ADM-79.
This is a proposed text amendment to Chapter 420, Defense Regulations, ADM-79. Once again, I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, public hearing notice, and my planning and zoning report. Motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one vacancy at the September 3, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions.
Once again, anybody who has any input or would like to speak on that matter, you have five minutes. If you would, step to the podium, please. Not seeing anyone, we'll call this, at this time, the public hearing to close and move on to the regular Board of Alderman minute, Board of Alderman meeting for September 15, 2015. Called up.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda will be with the approval of regular board minute meetings from September 1, 2015. I'll entertain a motion for that approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dyer. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Abstained, I was abstained.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries five, is five to zero with one abstained. Next item on the agenda will be hearing from the public. May I ask you to keep your comments down to five minutes? Please come to the podium and announce who you are, to the microphone, and relay what information you'd like to. Is it something that's on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll give you that time when it comes to the agenda. It's nothing worth changing up a little bit, okay?
Yeah, well, we'll take it there.
I think I usually get your name written down. Thank you. Not seeing anybody, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda would be Board of Alderman comments. Why am I tongue-tied in the mic? Anyone? Next item on the agenda would be the mayor's comments. A little briefly, I just, I'm really encouraged that all of us have gotten something into the newsletter that I hope is about ready to hit soon. I encourage everybody to read it, and if your friends don't read it, encourage them to look into it. It's got a lot of good information about the city. I really liked the plan when it came out. I'm excited about it getting ready to come out. It's a plus for our town and kind of keeps people in the know and draws attention to the events that we're having, so. With that, next item on the agenda would be the appointment of Cheryl Dyer to the Park Board for a three-year term. I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment for Cheryl Dyer to the Park Board for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Frederick, seconded by Alderman Delloy. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda will be the introduction of Jason Hanner, police officer that started on 9/17/2015.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce you all to our new police officer, Jason Hanner. He comes to us with a little bit of experience at the community college in St. Charles and is anxious to get going in his career here.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome. Board. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Next item on the agenda would be the proclamation and Paint the Town Orange Week for Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week from November 14th to 21st, 2015. I believe Michelle is not here, so Lauren is here, correct? You wouldn't come to the podium and just present anything you'd like?
Hi, my name is Lauren Hopkins, and I am on the Board of Directors for Agape. Michelle cannot be here. She's had a death in the family. So I am here to let you know that Agape is preparing for its second annual Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, which will occur November 14th through the 21st. We very much appreciate the city's support last year. We're asking for your support again. We would like to request permission to hang orange ribbons on Main Street and Highway 47. We understand we will have to put those up ourselves. It's not a problem. We'd also like to ask for a merril proclamation declaring November 14th through the 21st Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Warrenton. We had great success last year. We're looking forward to great success this year, and again, we thank you for support.
Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate it. Any questions for?
Dean of Motion, do authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation?
Can we do it? I get it. I'll entertain a motion to place the ribbons on the light poles from November 14th through 21st, 2015, in recognition of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderperson Holly. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda is requesting credit on a utility bill.
Do we need a motion on the proclamation, though? Does that need to be approved, the proclamation?
A separate one on the proclamation?
Yes.
How's that further down?
No. We just need to put that one in.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion for the proclamation to be signed by the mayor for the Hunger and Homelessness Awareness.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Frederick. Roll call vote, please.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
No.
Alderman Frederick?
No.
Alderman Holly?
No.
Alderperson Kastely?
No.
Motion fails, six to zero. There again. Sorry for your inconvenience, but the Alderman decision. Moving on. Next item on the agenda would be approval to close portions of Voschel Avenue, Cool Street, and Pygmy Street from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m. for the homecoming parade on October 2nd. You know what? I just got your name. Hang on a sec. Is it Ms. Busby?
My name is Jessica Busby.
Okay, Ms. Busby. Thank you.
Hello. I'm one of the teachers at the high school, and I'm here representing the student council who organizes the parade and the events for our homecoming that week. We're asking for those portions of the street to be closed from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m. in order for us to hold our annual homecoming parade. I know that there will be services to clean up after the horses, if anybody is concerned about that in any means. Are there any other questions?
Is anybody else, any questions?
So, the only question, so somebody's living on Voschel during this time period and has to leave their home. It's no big deal.
It's a, yeah, it's a short block of Voschel that gets shut down.
But that's not prohibiting anybody from using that.
No.
It's just during the time of the parade, the police will shut them out.
Yes.
It's not impacting the business. It's really not impacting residential area at all.
No.
Do you have any concerns or any comments?
No. No, this route has been actually a very good route over the past few years.
Easy for you guys to manage and handle?
Yes.
It's actually probably one of the better routes because you're not hitting Highway Am, which is going to hit all the time before.
But it's not going to cause any problems with manpower issues or anything else?
No, no, it's completely covered. Pretty easy to deal with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the street closings on October 2nd for the homecoming parade from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Holly, seconded by Alderman Frederick. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
No.
Alderman Frederick?
No.
Alderman Holly?
No.
Alderperson Kastely?
No.
Motion fails, six to zero. There again. Sorry for your inconvenience, but the Alderman decision. Moving on. Next item on the agenda will be approval to close portions of Voschel Avenue, Cool Street, and Pygmy Street from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m. for the homecoming parade on October 2nd. You know what? I just got your name. Hang on a sec. Is it Ms. Busby?
My name is Jessica Busby.
Okay, Ms. Busby. Thank you.
Hello. I'm one of the teachers at the high school, and I'm here representing the student council who organizes the parade and the events for our homecoming that week. We're asking for those portions of the street to be closed from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m. in order for us to hold our annual homecoming parade. I know that there will be services to clean up after the horses, if anybody is concerned about that in any means. Are there any other questions?
Is anybody else, any questions?
So, the only question, so if somebody's living on Voschel during this time period and has to leave their home, it's no big deal.
It's, yeah, it's a short block of Voschel that gets shut down. It's.
But that's not prohibiting anybody from using that.
No.
It's just during the time of the parade, the police will shut them out.
Yes.
It's not impacting the business. It's really not impacting residential area at all.
No.
Do you have any concerns or any comments?
No. No, this route has been actually a very good route over the past few years.
Easy for you guys to manage and handle?
Yes.
It's actually probably one of the better routes because you're not hitting Highway Am, which is going to hit all the time before.
Exactly.
But it's not going to cause any problems with manpower issues or anything else?
No, no, it's completely covered. Pretty easy to deal with.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the street closings on October 2nd for the homecoming parade from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Holly, seconded by Alderman Frederick. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the Catered Liquor License for the Fall Fest on September 26th for the Warren County Fair Board, Ron's Family Restaurant, Holy Rosary, El Jimador, and the City of Warrenton. Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Catered Liquor License for the Fall Fest on September 26th for the Warren County Fair Board, Ron's Family Restaurant, Holy Rosary, El Jimador, and the City of Warrenton.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dyer. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
No.
Alderperson Kastely?
No.
Motion fails, six to zero. There again. Sorry for your inconvenience, but the Alderman decision. Moving on. Next item on the agenda would be approval to close portions of Voschel Avenue, Cool Street, and Pygmy Street from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m. for the homecoming parade on October 2nd. You know what? I just got your name. Hang on a sec. Is it Ms. Busby?
My name is Jessica Busby.
Okay, Ms. Busby. Thank you.
Hello. I'm one of the teachers at the high school, and I'm here representing the student council who organizes the parade and the events for our homecoming that week. We're asking for those portions of the street to be closed from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m. in order for us to hold our annual homecoming parade. I know that there will be services to clean up after the horses, if anybody is concerned about that in any means. Are there any other questions?
Is anybody else, any questions?
So, the only question, so if somebody's living on Voschel during this time period and has to leave their home, it's no big deal.
It's, yeah, it's a short block of Voschel that gets shut down. It's.
But that's not prohibiting anybody from using that.
No.
It's just during the time of the parade, the police will shut them out.
Yes.
It's not impacting the business. It's really not impacting residential area at all.
No.
Do you have any concerns or any comments?
No. No, this route has been actually a very good route over the past few years.
Easy for you guys to manage and handle?
Yes.
It's actually probably one of the better routes because you're not hitting Highway Am, which is going to hit all the time before.
Exactly.
But it's not going to cause any problems with manpower issues or anything else?
No, no, it's completely covered. Pretty easy to deal with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the street closings on October 2nd for the homecoming parade from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Holly, seconded by Alderman Frederick. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the Catered Liquor License for the Fall Fest on September 26th for the Warren County Fair Board, Ron's Family Restaurant, Holy Rosary, El Jimador, and the City of Warrenton. Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Catered Liquor License for the Fall Fest on September 26th for the Warren County Fair Board, Ron's Family Restaurant, Holy Rosary, El Jimador, and the City of Warrenton.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dyer. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda would be hearing from Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Moore.
The only thing I have, Mayor, under operational updates is just for the public's purposes, the Fall Festival is the 26th of September, starting at noon. We invite everyone to come down and join us. There'll be lots of fun that day, lots of food and beverage and bands playing. Also, would invite any of you who wish to come down and join us and volunteer some labor for that day to let us know when you're available, and we will happily sign you up for some volunteer labor.
It's amazing how your grin just got about two feet wider when you said that.
No. It's a lot of fun. It's a lot of work, but it's a very good event for our city.
I'm going to tag on to that and say that there's been a lot of work put on by different people throughout the community for this.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I've been hearing nothing but positive about it so far, and I just hope that continues all the way through it. I hope we really are able to see this be an annual thing again. I think a lot of people are encouraging it and like it.
That's our plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments? Next item on the agenda would be hearing from zoning officer and building commissioner, Zach, or Zach, Zach Hannah, my apology. Told you tongue-tied.
Did you go out before this?
I wish I would have. Would have made it easier and smoother. Come on, Jack.
First item listed is the monthly report, but apparently it's not included in my Dropbox. I don't know if you guys have a copy of that or not.
Yes.
Yep, and you have to recite it by memory.
It's all good.
It's all good.
Anybody have any questions?
Does anybody else have it? Because I accidentally. I don't.
I don't have it.
I did have it.
I deleted it like two hours ago accidentally. You deleted it for everybody. I guess I did.
Yeah. I mean, I read it at 3:00.
At least I admit it.
I was going to say, hey, I got to give a pro.
Get that in the paper. I admitted it.
What's the computer system that gives her all this power?
Just wait till next time.
Well, Jack, I'm quite impressed by it, so.
It was outstanding, sir.
Probably one of your better reports.
It was.
All right. Next item on the agenda, I guess, moving on, would be the WCFA Mud Run.
This is a special event permit approval request to the Warren County Fair Association's Mud Run, SEP 15, to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on September 19, 2015. Motion for approval passed six to zero with two absent, one vacancy, and one abstention due to business relationship at the September 3, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions. And Mr. Ollman is here, if you have any specific questions for him.
Does anybody have any special questions from Mr. Ollman?
We've already discussed mine. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special event permit for the Warren County Fair Association for a mud run on September 19, 2015. Motion for approval passed six to zero with two absent, one vacancy, and one abstention due to business relationship at the September 3, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions. And Mr. Ollman is here, if you have any specific questions for him. Does anybody have any special questions from Mr. Ollman?
We've already discussed mine. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special event permit for the Warren County Fair Association for a mud run on September 19, 2015. Motion for approval passed six to zero with two absent, one vacancy, and one abstention due to business relationship at the September 3, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions. And Mr. Ollman is here, if you have any specific questions for him. Does anybody have any special questions from Mr. Ollman?
We've already discussed mine. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special event permit for the Warren County Fair Association for a mud run on September 19, 2015. Senator.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Holly, seconded by Alderman Frederick. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Kastely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
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 Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
No.
Alderman Holly?
No.
Alderperson Kastely?
No.
Motion fails, six to zero. There again. Sorry for your inconvenience, but the Alderman decision. Moving on. Next item on the agenda would be approval to close portions of Voschel Avenue, Cool Street, and Pygmy Street from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m. for the homecoming parade on October 2nd. You know what? I just got your name. Hang on a sec. Is it Ms. Busby?
My name is Jessica Busby.
Okay, Ms. Busby. Thank you.
Hello. I'm one of the teachers at the high school, and I'm here representing the student council who organizes the parade and the events for our homecoming that week. We're asking for those portions of the street to be closed from 11:45 to 2:00 p.m. in order
Homecoming Parade. I know that there will be services to clean up after the horses if anybody is concerned about that in any means. Are there any other questions?
Anybody else have any questions?
So, the only question, so somebody's living on Vashel during this time period and has to leave their home. It's no big deal.
Yeah, it's a short block of Vashel that gets shut down.
Okay. But that's not prohibiting anybody from using that.
No.
It's just during the time of parade, the police will shut them out.
Yes.
It's not impacting a business, it's really not impacting residential at all.
No.
Do you have any concerns or any comments?
No. No, this route has been actually a very good route for the past few years.
Easy for you guys to manage and handle?
Yes.
It's actually probably one of the better routes because you're not hitting highway am which is going to hit all the time before.
But it's not going to cause any problems with manpower issues or anything else?
No, no, it's completely covered, pretty easy to deal with.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the street closings on October 2nd for the homecoming parade from 11:45 to 2:00 P.M.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderson Holly, signed by Alden Frederick, roll call vote please.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Dyer?
Yes.
Aldman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderson Kestley?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the Catered Liquor License for the Fall Fest on September 26th for the Warren County Fair Board, Ron's Family Restaurant, Holy Rosary, El Jimador, and the City of Warrenton. Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Catered Liquor License for the Fall Fest on September 26th for the Warren County Fair Board, Ron's Family Restaurant, Holy Rosary, El Jimador, and the City of Warrenton.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Ock, signed by Alden Dyer. I get a roll call vote please.
Aldman Dyer?
Yes.
Aldman Frederick?
Yes.
Aldman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kestley?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda would be hearing from Director of Operations Finance Officer, Terry Moore.
The only thing I have, Mayor, under operational updates is just for the public's purposes, the Fall Festival is the 26th of September, starting at noon. We invite everyone to come down and join us, there'll be lots of fun that day, lots of food and beverage and bands playing. Also would invite any of you who wish to come down and join us and volunteer some labor for that day to let us know when you're available and we will happily sign you up for some volunteer labor.
It's amazing how your grin just got about two feet wider when you said that.
No, it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of work, but it's a very good event for our city.
I'm going to tag on to that and say, there's been a lot of work put on by different people throughout the community for this.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I've been hearing nothing but positive about it so far and I just hope that continues all the way through it. I hope we really are able to see this be an annual thing again. I think a lot of people are encouraging it and like it.
That's our plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments? Next item on the agenda would be hearing from Zoning Officer and Building Commissioner, Zach, or Zach, Zach Canuck, my apology.
Did you go out before this?
I wish I would have. Would have made it easier and smoother. Go ahead, Jack.
First item listed is the monthly report, but apparently it's not included in my Dropbox. I don't know if you guys have a copy of that or not.
Yes.
Yep, and you have to recite it by memory.
It's all good.
It's all good.
Anybody have any questions?
Does anybody else have it? Because I actually-
I don't.
I don't have it.
I deleted it.
I did, I had it before, but I don't have it now, but I do.
I deleted it like two hours ago accidentally.
You deleted it for everybody.
I guess I did.
Yeah. I mean, I read it at three o'clock.
At least I admit it.
I was just saying, hey, I gotta give her props.
Get that in the paper, I admitted it.
What's the computer system that gives her all this power?
Just wait till next time.
Well, Jack, I'm quite impressed by it, so.
It was outstanding, sir.
Probably one of your better reports.
It was.
All right, next item on the agenda, I guess, moving on, would be the WCFA Mud Run.
This is a special event permit approval request, the Warren County Fair Association's Mud Run, SEP 15, to be held at the Warren County Fairgrounds on September 19th, 2015. Motion for approval passed six to zero with two absent, one vacancy, and one abstention due to business relationship at the September 3rd, 2015, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with no additional conditions. And Mr. Olmby's here, if you have any specific questions for him.
Does anybody have any special questions from Mr. Olmby?
We've already discussed mine, thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the special event permit for the Warren County Fair Association for a mud run on September 19th, 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Alderson Holly, signed by Alden Dyer, I get a roll call vote please.
Aldman Frederick?
Yes.
Aldman Holly?
Yes.
Alderson Kestley?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Dyer?
Yes.
Next item is a proposed text amendment to Section 405.050, Definitions and Interpretation. And this motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one vacancy at the September 3rd, 2015, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with the condition that the existing definitions for trailer utility and vacation or recreation vehicles are not revised and remain the same.
Can we, I was at the meeting and I, the day after the meeting, I sent a message to Terry right away saying, I'm so confused, I don't, I didn't follow the meeting, and the meeting was extremely confusing in terms of what they were trying to do, how they accomplished it. So, my thinking would be, I don't know if everybody had a chance to watch the meeting, but I'm wondering if we could just kind of go through the text changes and you could tell, talk us about them and tell us which ones were approved and which ones weren't. Because there was a couple of them that I was, that really weren't discussed in the meeting, so I wasn't really familiar with what the function of it was. I know the parking lot or the, not the parking lot, but the parking space one was talked about, but there's one about parking for food and residential places with reservations. And so can we kind of go through this and just walk through those if you don't mind?
Sure. The first one that's highlighted in red is dwelling, single-family attached. It states a single-family dwelling that is attached to one or more other one-family dwellings by a common vertical wall, with each additional dwelling located on a separate lot. The proposal is to delete the section that says with each dwelling located on a separate lot.
Does this deal with the whole meets and bounds issue that we had talked about earlier? Is that why this change is in here?
Well, if it's, if it's a, if it's single-family attached, it does not have to be on a separate lot, like a duplex, for example, would be on one lot and it's single-family attached.
And I think Aldman Ock, as we go to multifamily being developed into the PUD district, they're going to be on one lot. So the definition is, you know, not just consistent with how it should be done, it also is consistent with kind of the way developments, multifamily will go forward in the future on the lots. Because in the PUD, there'll be one lot with like a condominium type ownership or something like that.
So basically what this is taking off the ordinance or the text is without each dwelling located on a separate lot.
Forcing them to be on a separate lot, because by that technically then we can't, we couldn't have a duplex or a triplex.
We couldn't have a PUD really, under that definition.
Yeah, R-PUD.
All right, that makes sense.
Any other questions on that definition?
And that one was approved by?
That one was approved by P&amp;Z.
The text change, okay, so the next one is?
The next one was the definition for parking space. And the existing definition is a space within a public or private parking area of not less than 200 square feet, 10 feet by 20 feet. And I'm revising that to say not less than 171 square feet, nine feet by 19 feet, because per our code, that's the, that's the size limits for perpendicular parking stall.
So it's really correcting something?
It was just correcting.
So the code's now consistent across?
It was correcting that definition, yes, sir.
And they approved that?
Yes, sir. Down a little farther, it was a definition called residential meal service, an eating establishment located within a residence where public dining is by reservation, no off-street parking is required, and the establishment is owned and managed by the residents therein. That was being deleted because for a home occupation, it wouldn't fall under that category and you wouldn't have a commercial business within a residential home.
What about a bed and breakfast? If somebody had a bed and breakfast and one of the things they had offered was you can come and have dinner at the bed and breakfast, you don't have to stay, but you can have dinner, would that prohibit them from doing that if we take this out?
No, bed and breakfast is separately defined as overnight lodging and morning meal for travelers in a dwelling unit for compensation, if there are more guest rooms are provided. So it wouldn't affect the ability to have a bed and breakfast. It just, when we talked about this, we really couldn't figure out what it was, because we had bed and breakfast separately defined, I mean, we're like, what wouldn't have parking where they would serve meals and prepare it? I mean, it just is probably one of those antiquated definitions that were, was kind of stuck into the definitions section.
Well, I know in some communities, not, you know, in our community, but in some communities that you do have a family who, part of what they do is do meals, so in other words, instead of going out to eat at whatever the restaurant is, you can go to their house and they'll prepare, prepare a nice meal for you. And I don't know if that's going on in Warrenton, but I know in other larger communities, that's, was a popular business for quite a while, so, and still is, but it's not applicable. And we'll deal with it if it comes up.
Well, I, I think we could, but I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, I think if that popped up, you guys could readdress it, it was just, we have so many definitions that it's confusing what goes in what category and when, can't really think of an example in Warrenton, it's like, well, what are we restricting here?
Yeah, well, that was the only thing I could think of, was somebody had a bed and breakfast type operation and we're just simply doing meals, it's something special.
We would treat that as a bed and breakfast under our code.
Okay. So they approved that one to be taken out?
Yes, sir.
So the next one down is the sight distance area, which is an add-on.
Yes, that'd be a new definition. Sight distance area, on a corner lot in any district, nothing shall be erected, placed, planted, or allowed to grow in such a manner as to materially impede the vision of vehicle traffic within a required sight distance area per Section 405.050, drawing ST1. And at the end of the definitions is a drawing that shows the sight distance area. And it's basing it on the field of vision, if a car pulled up to a stop sign, what they would be able to see sitting stopped at the first, first area at the stop sign.
So in some ways it addresses the corner, corner side, the corner yard issue?
Yes, and it's to help with, there's a definition for landscape treatment and it talks about it can't be within the sight distance area, but there was no definition of the sight distance area to determine exactly where the landscape treatment could be placed.
Okay, and that was added on, they approved it?
Yes, sir.
So now we get down to utility trailer.
Trailer utility, a vehicle other than a motor vehicle designed or intended for general hauling, whether or not such vehicle is attached to or resting on the ground, or something having a location on the ground, not to be used for living quarters and required to be parked in the side or backyard only. The proposed amendment was to delete the section that says and required to be parked in the side or backyard only, to make it legal for someone to put their utility trailer in their driveway.
For how long?
As long as it's legally licensed.
So this allows them, if, this was rejected, right?
Yes, sir, this was one that they voted not to change, and then they also voted on it separately after they voted on it not to change.
So the issue with this was, this is where it got confusing.
Yes.
So what they're saying is that they thought it was okay to park in front, or?
No, sir, the way I interpret their motion was to leave this exactly as it is and to leave the section that says and required to be parked in the side or backyard only as part of the definition.
So Planning and Zoning basically said they did not want to allow trailers to be parked in the driveway, in the front of the house?
They specifically said they did not want to change this definition.
Okay.
I think Jack's turned into a lawyer.
So, well, this kind of also ties in with the next one on RVs. If I recall right, the council, in addressing the problem on?
Dogwood.
Dogwood, where an RV is parked in front of the house for a significant period of time, we were concerned that there's a traffic hazard there of kids running out, and so we want it to be changed so you couldn't park your RV in front of the house, is that, is that correct?
On the street.
That we're discussing, you could not park it in the street.
Right.
Longer than, I believe Chris was going to have a certain amount of time.
Twenty-four hours, what we're going to do is have this go through and then what we're going to do is, we're going to write it under the traffic code, instead of the zoning code, so it'll go directly to you, that says they can't park it on the street, a vacation recreational vehicle longer than 24 hours, so they can't have it parked there for longer than 24 hours, which was kind of the prep type of licensed vacation vehicle home, so they would have to remove it off the street. And so the concept was, well, if we're going to make them take it off the street, should we allow them to park it in the driveway at that point? But, so, this was the first part of it, which had to go through Planning and Zoning. The second part will be in an ordinance that will, that will come in front of you in front of, at the next meeting, it will just be under the traffic code for approval.
But, but it kind of goes against what P&amp;Z was saying, because P&amp;Z said they had a bigger problem with these vehicles parked in the driveway. So we're kind of, we say, all right, we'll agree with you, then we go to the traffic section, we're going to just totally change agreeing with them.
Well, but I think they're two separate issues, because I think the issue of whether they should park it on the street or not is really a public safety issue, as you pointed out, Aldman Ock, of sight distance, visibility within the street, and really, I mean, it should be regulated under the traffic code instead of zoning code, you know, because it's a public street. That's my opinion on it, Greg may not agree with me completely on it, but, but this question, I look at it as more as, we allow, we, you know, Scott Schoenfeld was on our Planning and Zoning Commission, he said, and these guys verified it, Jack verified it, they parked their vacation vehicle home, his neighbor, in their backyard, because they couldn't park it in their driveway, literally parked in the backyard. And it, he said it dominated it, that's what they saw in their backyard. So the idea was, was there really an issue with regards to parking it in your driveway? Would you rather it be parked in the driveway instead of on the side of the house or behind the house? And so that's what that proposed amendment was. We're going to address the vacation vehicle separately in the traffic code, it'll go directly to you, which I see it as only about parking on the street, you know, which is parking like, you know, in, in the subdivision over there, you know, where you're parking in a narrow intersection where, you know, should they be parking vacation vehicles on the street?
But by doing that, we're not addressing how long it can sit in the driveway?
No, we're not. Before, they could not have it in the driveway at all, but the way our notification process worked with them parking in the driveway is how much time did they essentially get before they would get a ticket?
Usually get a, before they get a ticket?
Before they get a summons.
We have a courtesy notice system, which we go back and check in 10 days, then they get it, or seven days, then they get an NOV, which gives them another seven days, so realistically it'd be two weeks before they would get a-
But that's on the street.
No, that's in the driveway. That's in the driveway.
It'd be two weeks before they would actually get a ticket.
So you can park it in the side or behind, right now, you cannot park it in the driveway. If you park it in the driveway, you basically have a two-week courtesy period where somebody could, you know, do what they need to do before they get a summons. The change was, we thought of, was, well, if they can't put it in the street at all anymore, which there was no restriction, we're going to put that in the traffic code, putting it, no, not along the street was, should they or could they be allowed to park it in the driveway? So that's what the change was, that was brought to Planning and Zoning that they rejected.
But if somebody had a RV and they had parked it in the driveway and exceeded the length of driveway and was blocking the sidewalk, do they still get the 14 days courtesy notice?
No, I think that would be, I mean, if you're blocking the sidewalk-
There's a whole, there's a, that's against code, probably in the traffic.
Right, I mean, I think that would be a different safety issue or block, I think we actually have a code section that says you can't block sidewalks. So, I mean, that would be something, if it's a traffic code, traffic safety issue, they could go out and write the summons right there and say, you need to move this, it's a safety issue. And I know they kind of, they kind of come from the same power, but they're a little bit different. Zoning requires kind of the notice provision, traffic requires, hey, this isn't immediate public safety, you need to move this or get this out of the way.
Where's codes can be issued?
So Planning and Zoning is okay letting people park RVs?
In the street.
No, in the grass.
And I wasn't even brought up.
I thought in the yard.
Right, now they're legal in the street.
They're legal in the street.
Did they say they wanted to continue to allow people to park in the street?
Well, I got the impression-
They did not?
They didn't want them to continue parking in the street, because they didn't want them to park on the driveway or on the grass. That's what I thought I heard them say. So they were perfectly happy leaving them in the street.
They wanted to leave the definition as is. They approved everything else except the definition for utility trailer and vacation or recreation vehicle.
Which allows them to currently park in the side yard or the backyard or the street.
Right.
But the street issue would be rectified by the other ordinance that comes up-
Correct.
-because it would fall underneath that, which would almost negate this and be covered.
I don't think, I, I think they're two separate things, I mean, really, I mean, I know I'm splitting hairs on this, but I mean, you're talking about the street where vehicles, traffic is going all day long and the situation that was brought up, you know, about the other one where, you know, and basically what we're going to do for the street is give them a 24-hour period, which is, the statement that's always been made is, I don't want to store my travel vacation vehicle home at my house, I just want to have enough time to get it ready there. So that's why we have kind of the courtesy notice period where somebody could go in, load up for the vacation, get it moved out, and, and, you know, go on their way and then come in and unload it. So we're keeping that kind of courtesy thing in place with not, the rec, if you, if you accept the recommendation of Planning and Zoning, that will stay in place with them pulling in the driveway. I look at it being on the street as a separate and distinct issue, which is really a traffic, travel, safety issue, you know, you know, ingress, egress on streets and, you know, availability to houses, which is really your decision under the traffic safety code, not under the zoning code. It's just, we never had a regulation that said you couldn't park it on the street. And that was really the first time the issue of parking on the street really, truly came up as a separate safety traffic issue.
But if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we're, the angle we're coming from is, it's two conflicting things, Planning and Zoning and then a traffic code would be conflicting with each other if it's not planned out together.
They're not conflicting, because the Planning and Zoning Code doesn't say you shall be allowed to park it on the street, it just says, it deals with the property and the lot, saying you can only park it in your side or behind your house.
So that, so to be, if I understand this correctly, Planning and Zoning did not recommend changing this either, so they're looking at keeping Planning and Zoning the same, which is that if you have an RV, it has to be parked in the side yard or the backyard. The street isn't addressed by Planning and Zoning.
Correct.
We'll address the street later with, with the potential traffic code change.
As long as you guys want to move forward with the traffic code change, saying no longer than 24 hours in the street.
So this made zero change to the zoning?
I just wonder why we want to allow RVs in yards, backyards, side yards, why we want boat trailers sitting in side yards, backyards. I thought we were trying to address that.
I mean, I have a question, I also had that thought, because a lot of communities don't allow that. And if you park it in your side yard, is there a limit as to how close to the neighbor's house it could be? Doesn't, I mean, in theory, if you had a big RV and you parked it in your side yard, you'd have that RV with, right on top of the property lawn.
There's no setback requirement for the RV on the side yard, no. And like I said, we had a Planning and Zoning-
It's ridiculous to have them sitting on the street, in my opinion.
What'd you say?
It's ridiculous to have them sitting on the street.
Yeah, I think-
I agree, but I think it's also ridiculous to have them all sitting in the yard.
Well, I don't disagree with that either.
That's what I'm grasping.
What are they going to do, hang them on clothesline?
They can put them out with the rest of us, they can put our RVs.
Well, I don't want so.
Now, remember, if it's in the side yard or backyard, it still has to be licensed right there.
That's still to be licensed.
Has to be licensed and nobody can be living out of it. So maybe what we can do is, if you guys want to just accept the no change tonight on this, we'll have the ordinance ready to go next meeting for the street no longer than 24 hours from the next meeting, and then maybe it'll make some sense with regards to how they interplay, because I don't think there's a conflict at all, I think they're, they work together fine.
I'm fine with the street, I mean, I get, I get everything about the street. My, my problem is letting people, you know, park stuff in their yards and their backyards and grass growing up around their trailers and stuff when there's storage lots for people with campers. If you're going to own a camper, you put it in a storage lot. I, I see no reason why we should junk up our town with everybody's camper, trailers, boat trailers. I mean, we've got some stuff growing around town that has not been addressed for years just because we don't have an ordinance to say, you got to move your boat trailer out of your yard.
But don't we have ordinance to address the stuff growing around it?
To a certain extent, but-
But, so you're, you're solving one problem, you're, you've already solved that problem. That problem is solved. If, if the enforcement is the issue, then that's totally separate than writing another ordinance to move something, because if we're concerned that stuff is growing up around it, that's not, that's, that's not what this does.
No, no, I agree, but it, it does tend to, does tend to go that direction.
I mean, I think it's a really, what do you want your community to look like issue? I think it's separate from what's here. I mean, there's a lot of communities that will not allow you to park anything in the grass.
Including your cars?
Including your cars, because they feel like it's a, it's a, it creates quality to the community, whereas in Warrenton, you can park anything except for your front yard, anything you want as long as it's licensed, you know, and, and I think what Karen's point is, it's a quality of neighborhood issue, and I think it's something that we probably should be talking about, I don't know necessarily in the context of this discussion, because it gets confusing. But I mean, I could see some legitimate issues where you have people parking RVs in their backyard, it's not offensive, it's not near the neighbor's house, but I also can see some that are parking right on the boundary line, so when you look out your bedroom window, there's, there's the neighbor's RV and it's on the bump. So I think that's a separate issue, and I, we've talked about stuff like this before, is that we want to sit down and look at some of these type of ordinances as to how our neighborhoods should look. This hasn't gone away, I mean, 25 years ago, we discussed the concept of should guys driving big 18-wheelers be allowed to park, you know, their vehicles in, in the, their yards and let them run all night bothering the neighbors? And so the board at that time didn't want to deal with it. So I think this is a bigger question that maybe we could put on the agenda and talk about.
I think we'll address it at some time.
I think we should, yeah, I think we should.
I do think it is a lot to be consulted on.
We'll have that ready to go for you guys on the traffic safety issue for the vacation vehicles for the next meeting.
I think that takes care of what you originally wanted to take care of, right?
Well, the one, the one that brought this whole thing about is this one sitting over in the street where I, where I live.
Right.
It hasn't moved in a year and a half.
Right.
Or more.
Right.
Never been hooked to.
And I actually, it'll probably be rectified next ordinance whenever, like you said, coming in the next meeting, if that's okay.
Okay, now can I go back to the, and just explain to me, on the utility, utility trailers, if we approve the recommendation of P&amp;Z, what does it look like?
They can't park it in their driveway, they can only continue to park it in their side or backyard or on the street.
The utility trailer and the recreational vehicle stay, the recommendation of Planning and Zoning is that they stay exactly as they were before, right?
Yes.
So, so the utility trailer, if we accept this, can we park on the, on the street?
Yes.
Even if we don't accept this, right? Even if we don't accept this, it can still be parked on the street?
Right, until you make them, right, until you-
Then the question is, if you're going to rewrite the ordinance about RVs parked in the street, should that ordinance include utility trailers parked in the street? should that ordinance include utility trailers parked in the street?
We were talking about encompassing that, didn't we?
Do we wanna encompass both of those, or not? What they do, I mean, I don't know how big, I know, I know the issue on RVs, because you can see it and drive over his name, I don't know what the issue is with utility trailers, because I don't have the experience.
What we discussed, and we had a very lengthy discussion about this, because there's been people that have parked semi-trailers that take up an entire lane, and, and what do you do about that? And what my suggestion was, was that we do it for vacation vehicle, because that clearly is an issue and, and should not be there more than 24 hours. It's the similar language we're gonna use for our layover vehicle ordinance with regards, which has been successful. The thought was, if they park a char, a too large of a trailer where it creates a traffic safety hazard, law enforcement has the ability to redirect it or say, "Hey, this is a traffic safety hazard." But utility trailers have such a wide range between something very small and innocuous, all the way up to something big, was, let's get the vacation vehicle one in place, and then maybe kinda look throughout the city how prevalent the, the utility trailer issue is of parking on the street, because really this came about as, um, an issue about vacation vehicle trailers, to see if it, if it really is an issue, that we really have to address it, or if it's not an issue. Because, you know, when we talked about it, I said, you know, the back of a tractor trailer cannot be parked on a residential street that's, you know, 60 feet wide, it doesn't make sense. We, we could send law enforcement out there and say, "Hey, you gotta move this, this is forcing people in the other lane," or it could create a traffic hazard. Or it doesn't create a traffic hazard and it's okay, but the thought being, the complaint has been about vacation vehicles, let's get that passed, let's get this kinda preliminary work done about where are they gonna put it, not on the street, and then maybe look at the utility trailers as a citywide issue after we've already addressed the, the, the vacation vehicle.
Because, I mean, you know, the other side of this, and I don't know what the chief feels about it, I mean, we currently have a 500 block of Steinhagen, that, Damien, I'm sure you're familiar with this. There's a gentleman who must be an over-road driver, who parks his over-road vehicle. People across the street park their cars on their side. If an ambulance had to get down the street, it couldn't get down the street. Now, is it up to the officer to, when he goes by, to stop and say something? Or should we put an ordinance in place so the officer doesn't have to deal with the issue?
I think, isn't there something that, in our ordinance, is the coverage, if a motor vehicle cannot travel down the roadway, it's a ticketable effect, if I remember right?
Yeah, I think-
The only time they wouldn't be able to do it is if both sides of the street decide to park on the street, right?
Which happens there.
Which, which person gets ticketed, the person who parked second? And then how do you determine who parked second? Because it's legal to park a car in the street, you know, so that's the, that's where I think the trouble comes in.
And then the question becomes, you make one side of the street, no parking, if it's too narrow a street.
I thought we had signs all over saying, "No, no vehicles over 24,000 pounds," that would leave a-
Is that all over?
There is on Steinhagen, but-
There's a lot of roads that have those.
There are some, but there's one. Steinhagen is that way, but, but the truck by itself-
They put a merry-go-round like they did 20 mile an hour of speed limit signs.
But, the truck, the truck by itself with no trailer doesn't exceed that one.
It's still licensed over 24,000. What's licensed for, not what it weighed, but what it's licensed for 24, over 24,000.
And I'm, I'm hoping for it, but I really think we can cover some of this under ordinance as we get that ready for next meeting.
Well, I mean, my suggestion would be, let's get the, we've gotten this, it kind of, we're not gonna, because our question was, the reason we brought this to P and Z is, are people gonna complain and do we have to give them another place to park it? Let's let them park it in the driveway. P and Z said, "No, we wanna keep it the way it is, just side or backyards." And then Karen, you raised a good point, is, should, you know, Scott Schoenfeld, and, and I think, Jack, you've seen it, or where, I don't know if it's you, Jack, that saw it, but where his neighbor parked a big RV right in the middle of the back of the yard, on the grass, and he's like, "That's all I saw," and it's exactly what you're talking about. But, my thought would be, let's, let's amend the traffic code for the vacation vehicle, and then look at where there are other issues and see if we need to put some regulations in place for the utility trailers. Because they really are kinda different the way I think people-
Well, I think I'm fine with that, I think we just need to make sure it gets back on the agenda.
Yeah, because we've talked about it for a long time.
Yeah, we've talked about it.
Would that appease you for the?
No, I, I appease.
Good, no? All right, well, the, these will be addressed in, uh, bill later on the agenda, so, Jack?
Next item is a proposed text amendment to Chapter 420 fence regulations. Motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one vacancy at the September 3rd, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, with no additional conditions.
Any questions, or?
Now, this was a little bit confusing also to me. So, can you explain how the, there'd be a long discussion about how if a fence extends in the side yard so far and it blocks the neighbor's view as they back out, is that an issue? And then, they got, there was a long discussion about front of properties, how did that ever work out?
A fence cannot be in front of the front building line, nowhere. What this is trying to accomplish is the definition of a landscape treatment. Uh, landscape treatment shall be permitted provided they not, do not exceed three feet in height and do not reduce the sight distance of the traveling public. So, that would allow someone to put a, up to a three-foot tall, say like a picket fence or something that you can see through, out closer to gain more of their yard, if they're trying to. It's not technically a fence, because it's, it's three feet or less, but it is a, a barrier that they can install. So, we were trying to get rid of the minimum of 27 feet and to say that it, it cannot be permitted within the sight distance area. And which the definition of landscape treatment already had that in there, but we had no def, we had no specific guideline for what is the sight distance area, so that's what this is trying to accomplish.
So then, and I understand you got multi-requests for this on side yards?
There's been several people that's asked why they can't have a fence or something out closer to the road.
So, the theory is, we're not setting a defined boundary. What we're saying is, we're gonna go through the sight view process on each corner, and that will determine how far out. One property may be able to go five feet within the road, another property maybe 20 feet, right? Just depends on what the, the corner is.
On a case-by-case, to try to allow to get the most coverage possible for the resident, but still be within the safety parameters, is our goal.
And if the fence is put up, it has to be a specific type of landscaping?
It has to be three feet or less, and it can't be sight obscuring, you have to be able to see through it.
Which is bad.
Anybody else, any questions or comments?
Well, it's not perfect answer to help some of the people, but it's a very uncompromised, it's, it's a halfway point, I think.
Are you good with it, Jack?
Yes, I think, I think it'll be helpful.
Jack got permission from St. Louis County to do, use their engineered drawing for the sight distance, which I thought was pretty good, their, their diameter.
Yeah, he's used to several dimensions.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Thought you drew them.
The best item of the night, request for approval for a cargo van.
No.
Total price is $20,806, and the budgeted amount was $21,000.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the cargo van from, I never say this right, Joe Mack?
Mockins.
Mockins Ford, in the amount of $20,806, the state bid.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Personali, signed by Alder Person Castily, if I can have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Is that it, Jack?
Uh, thank you, Karen, for not deleting that one.
Now I can do it, now I know I can do it, I can't wait.
It's not like Guy gets them every week, that's the first one ever for the building to pull.
Thank you, boys, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next item on agenda would be hearing from Maintenance and Grounds Director Brad Bruiser.
It's not bad.
Not my day.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Board, uh, going ahead and nice for you, it's my, uh, my monthly report. Still doing a lot of grass cutting, a little, a lot of trimming.
So, I saw the, uh, tennis courts over at Market, so the wall now, grass is there. We're not having the mud run through the wall like we did before, so that's kinda fixed itself?
Right, we were gonna, yeah, then we had the, on the, to redo the court, but we're too late in the season. So, we're gonna do that first thing in the spring, they're gonna come in and, uh, fix those cracks that the women were worried about and get that done, so.
Okay.
After that, we should have all that done, we'll be taking that silt fence down here shortly, just to kinda, we wanna make sure that grass is really set on there before that, that hill wash is so bad, that's the only thing, so.
Okay, and then on the basketball courts at the park, you know, you talked about, there was water setting?
Yeah, that's all.
You went out and drilled and-
Yeah, drilled, we haven't had any problem with that at all, so.
That's taken care of the problem fully.
Yeah, so, uh, every time we go over, unless somebody's been, uh, pushing it off themselves. But, yeah, the holes have, uh-
To do, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, next item on agenda would be hearing from Public Works Director Guy Tevers. Just making sure I got that right.
Good evening, first item I have is the monthly report.
Any questions about the monthly report?
No questions, then, uh, next item is approvals of some projects. The first project is some asphalt work for Well 8 parking. Price came out to be $6,352, and it was budgeted for $6,400. This is for when we unload chlorine, make it a hard surface, so we're not walking on rocks and trying to move chlorine bottles through the rocks.
Where's Well 8?
Well 8 is the farther one from, uh, heading north.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Well 8 parking overlay project in the amount of $6,352.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Alder Personali, signed by Alderman Frederick. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Next item I have is for Well 7 parking, same issues, just getting it cleaned up so it's safer to park and move equipment if needed. And that was, that came in at $2,680, a budget amount of $2,700.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Well 7 parking overlay project in the amount of $2,680.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Delloy, signed by Alderman Dyer, if I can have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Next item I have is for, um, to do some work on the range, gun range improvement, this is some concrete work. The, um, price came in at $731, and budget amount was $731. This is contract, I'm being contracted to Greg, to do this project.
So, I'm the general contractor on this? Yeah.
Please, no.
Right at the budgeted amount, sounds like you have it set in.
I am pretty impressed.
Well, the, the total project amount is 3,300, because we're gonna put a shelter up there and, you know, a place for us to put our, our gear while we're trying to get set up, so. This is, this is the piece that, um, you guys are kind enough to do for us at Public Works and get the flat work done, so we can put the shelter up on top of that.
Just impressed by the many hats he wears. So, our question is, whose department is it being charged to?
Uh, it's being charged to Capitol.
Is that right, Jim?
Capitol, under the police.
Yeah, okay, thank you for the clarification. I'll entertain a motion to approve the range improvement project for, in the amount of $731.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alder Person Holly, if I can have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion carries six, zero.
Next item I'm asking for is approval for a 12-inch backhoe bucket for John Deere. Herb Equipment is our local John Deere dealership, and budget amount was $1,000, and came in at $950.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to award the backhoe bucket bid to Herb Equipment Company in the amount of $950. Now, I hope I got all that out right. So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Officer Frederick? Signed by Alderman Dyer, if I can have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Next item I have is a track loader, two track loader buckets, this is for the Bobcat, and the, it's a, it's a sole vendor, and that came out, the budget amount was $2,000.
Oh.
That's why I did the first one first, and that was on there.
Maybe you also didn't list the budget amount, I'm sorry, did you ask that?
Came in at $2,007.58.
Making that motion.
That's the price from McDonald's meal. I'll entertain a motion to award the, the backhoe bucket bid to Bobcat in the amount of $2,0758.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Personali, signed by Alder Person Castily? Roll call vote, please?
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero.
Next item I have is grinder for Fairlane lift station, it cratered, replacement.
Is that a budgeted item, or?
It's, um, not a budgeted item.
You say the best for the last?
Yes.
Okay.
The replacement for it comes from JWC Environmental, at $21,601.
Before I ask for a, a motion, I'm just gonna make the comment that it is quite comical from our point, as your voice lowers, how they all smile, because they know just how you feel, or what you're thinking.
I'm just kinda curious, does the lift station still function without the grinder?
It does, what it does is, anything that's coming into the lift station goes through a grinder and shreds it up to make it smaller.
Okay.
Uh, there is a little detention area right there that will collect any big stuff that goes through. Uh, so we go out and clean it out daily by hand, and there's also an auger there that we can turn on and remove any big debris that comes through.
But aren't they getting more stringent on this, through EPA's, on how big of items are allowed through certain areas? Are they not, I read that somewhere?
This was put in when the lift station was installed, I don't know when that, that whole thing was rebuilt, but they were having problems with the rag getting wrapped in the pumps.
Right.
And then the pumps wouldn't work, and you had to pull the pumps out, clean the impeller off and set the pumps back in.
It's just a lot of manpower hours that we're gonna use for useless.
An impeller for a pump is-
That things can be prevented easily with this. Okay. I'll, uh, entertain a motion to amend the budget and add this project to the capital improvement list and purchase a grinder from JWC Environmental in the amount of $21,601, the low bid. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alder Person Castily, if I can have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
It's like a tuneers or something on the budget.
All right, next item on the agenda would be hearing from the Chief of Police, Greg Huddyshell.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, I have my monthly report from August for you. Uh, just a couple of things to note, back to zero participants in the ride-along program.
Yeah, we'll have to change that.
I know, I need to figure out another way to get people to come out and do that, follow me, maybe? You should, huh? Give you, oh, no, I'm not gonna do that. That sounds way too dangerous. But anyway, I, I encourage people all the time to come out and ride, and, um, it's just, it's a really good way, not only to see how the police department functions, but, um, also the great crew of guys that we have working for us here. Um, another couple of things to note, uh, the detectives have been really actively involved at the high school and really with the school district as a whole. Um, they did a, a PR gig, the two of them, uh, where they did their, their fake crime scene presentation, and that's always, always, the kids love that, and actually, uh, had it the other day. One of the kids who had been through it last year, uh, came up to one of the detectives and told him how much he, that she had enjoyed it and, uh, remembered him from that, so, that's, that's a really good deal. Um, the other thing that, uh, Rich Black is doing, Detective Black, is really establishing with, uh, some of the new leadership at the school district, um, new protocols with regard to intruders and active shooters. So, um, I, I feel really strongly that we're on the right track with that in the school district, and us are really partnered up on that and moving forward.
I've had some, I've heard some pretty positive things out of that.
Yeah.[1770.14] Yeah.
Not from staff, actually surprisingly, some of the kids, some of the changes.
Oh, really?
I'm, I'm just alarmed at the number of suicide calls.
Well, and those typically are, they're not successful suicides, but, you know, we do get quite a few who call in and they get classified as a suicide call because they're talking about it or whatever. But we do end up having one of our crisis intervention officers actually respond to the scene and handle the majority of those if there's one available. And they quite often do get taken to the hospital for evaluation.
Because that seems, nine seems like an awful lot.
Yeah, it is.
So now I figured out that a one-hitter has nothing to do with baseball. What is K2?
K2?
Yeah.
Uh, that goes back a few years now. K2 is the synthetic marijuana.
You're learning a lot tonight.
Hey, I might as well ask him if you got him. I noticed we had six following too close behind, so I assume that relates to the interstate?
That would be absolutely related to the interstate.
And how's that going?
It's going well. We're taking our time, sort of ramping our guys up to make sure that they're getting out there and doing it safely, so.
Are any of the drug-related incidents from interstate?
Yeah, I believe some of them are. I, I don't know exactly which ones are, but, um, I know some of the guys are pretty actively searching vehicles out there, so. They're, they're looking for the stuff and I would imagine eventually they'll hit the big one. There's plenty of it out there. Any other questions? Um, I had a phone-in request for an announcement from the Economic Development Director. Michelle would like to remind everybody that Little Shop of Horrors is having their, I'm Little Shop of Horrors.
Wow.
Little Shop of Vapors.
I am not the only one.
We're gonna burst out into song here.
We know you're the only one.
Little Shop, yeah, I am, actually.
Isn't that the one with Seymour, the big?
That's, that's, yeah. Little Shop of Vapors is having their ribbon cutting tomorrow at noon. That's at 206 East Main Street and she would like to see everybody there.
At what time?
Noon.
I will not be available.
Oh, okay. That's in the old bookstore storefront.
Right next to Jordan's place.
Right next to Jordan's place.
Well, you've done your job and you're a messenger, so we will not crucify you.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'm, I'll take that.
You're still on the hook, though.
Okay. I'll go. Any other questions for Chief Hattishell, please? Moving on, next item on the agenda would be Bill's ordinances. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number 38-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Personali, signed by Alderman Frederick.
An ordinance amending section 405.050, definitions and interpretation of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading passage of Bill number 38-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Delloy, signed by Alderman Dryer. If I could have a, or, I'm sorry.
An ordinance amending section 405.050, definitions and interpretation of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
All right, if I can have a roll call vote, please?
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Frederick?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.